Cavosa Excavating is a family-owned and operated company specializing in the installation of Title V septic systems. Cavosa Excavating is one of the largest septic system installers on Cape Cod. Whether it's upgrading your current system or installing a whole new system, Cavosa Excavating can do the job. Cavosa Excavating, 508-563-5530.
Good evening and welcome to the August 11th meeting of the Board of Selectmen, and I ask that you rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't really have an announcement tonight, but I would like to just take a moment to thank the chief, the police officers, and the staff of our police department for a fabulous national night out last week. That was on Tuesday night, and it was so well-attended. There were many more people there this year than last year. The demonstrations, the equipment, the tourists of the building, and then they had the canine group from the sheriff's office. And the children, you could tell they really had a great time watching the dogs sniff or drugs. Of course, there were no drugs, but anyway, it was a great event, and I want to thank the chief and his staff for putting that on. So, the first thing we have on our agenda is public comment. I want to say that I've been asked by FCTV to remind participants that when you come to this microphone, to speak into it, and it helps people at home. This microphone is not for us and people in this room, it's really for the people at home. It goes right out on the TV cable, so please stay close to the microphone, be very clear and audible so that people can hear you. So now, is there anyone who would like to speak on a public comment? If not, we have, yes, good evening.
Good evening. Petty Officer Chad Smollett from Air Station Cape Cod. We've submitted an event application to take over Manhaut Beach on the 27th from approximately 8:00 in the morning until about 16:00.
And that is 16:00?
Oh, 4 o'clock.
Thank you.
Sorry, ma'am.
From 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Okay, that's good. We understand that a lot better.
Basically, the event that we're proposing is a search and rescue training evolution, not only for the air station, but demonstration for the public in the city of Falmouth down off the beach. It'll involve our swim drills that we complete annually, various survival techniques, stuff like that, in the event that we had a plane go down, stuff that we would do. And then, we're looking to have a couple helicopters come out, possibly a HC-144 do a drill drop, so they'll drop a raft next to the beach, after which the helicopter will come in and perform various hoisting evolutions of our own folks from the air station, followed by a morale day for us, sort of a picnic as an annual, kind of kickoff the summer type thing for us, close out the summer.
And what day again?
It'd be Wednesday, August 27.
August 27. Okay, this wasn't under our events policy, but we have asked them to come on a public comment. So, are there any comments from the board?
Madam Chair, perhaps I could just comment. As per standard procedure, we would ask the gentleman from the Coast Guard if they would routinely interact with our beach superintendent, Don Hofer, as well as obviously police and fire officials as well, and our marine and environmental services. And I think that, I know that's standard operating procedure.
Yes, sir, of course.
But I would be remiss if I did not so note.
I have spoke to Don Hofer. When I originally ventured down this path, we were, the location was the Heights, and we realized that parking's not adequate, it's peak summer, so that'd be a little bit tight. So when I spoke to Don, he recommended either Manhaut Beach or as a backup surf drive, something with a little bit more space and a little less public, right down in the heart of things. I've also spoke with the fire department and fire prevention to pull the adequate permits that we'll need to shoot off training pyro and stuff like that, so.
So, and this is a Thursday, is it?
It's a Wednesday.
Oh, it's a Wednesday.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're talking about Manhaut Beach, though, just to be.
Yes, yes, sir.
Yes, and I'm glad that you suggested that because we will have this go through the departments. And I think for now, we're supportive to what it is you want to do, but we will put it back on our agenda at our next meeting, just to have a final vote on it.
Excellent.
But we're saying, yes, go ahead, meet with the departments, and it sounds like a great thing. Is there anybody here who lives near Manhaut Beach or swims at Manhaut Beach that might want to have a comment about it? Sounds kind of like it's going to have a very interesting day.
Yeah.
And a lot for people to see, also, in terms of, to actually see how you go about these rescues at sea.
What is our last day that the beaches are open? If this is the 27th?
They're open until after Labor Day.
After Labor Day, okay.
So, Labor Day would be their coming weekend.
Yes, ma'am.
Sam?
But, I mean, to point out in that regard, I mean, an awful lot of people have started to leave the Cape because of opening schools, so this is probably just starting when the, you know, the peak is.
But the beach is still open to the public.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, if it had been the week, the next week, then there'd be no issue about an 8:00 to 4:00 p.m.
So, are you using the beach as well as the water?
We would need about a section of beach, maybe 50 to 70 yards at the max.
At max?
Yeah.
So, you could work with the beach superintendent and you could decide where the best piece of the beach is that that would work?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, that'll make for people having a very interesting day if they go to the beach on August 27th.
I've actually participated, or at least been, you know, a visitor for such a demonstration.
Yeah, we did the Heights, I think, a couple years ago.
Yeah, this was actually in Maryland, but it is fascinating. I think anybody in the area, whether they plan to be there or not, would actually enjoy all the demonstrations.
Great, okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak on a public comment? If not, we will move to, we will move to the minutes of July 28th, 2014, and these are the minutes of the public session.
I move approval of the July 28th public session minutes.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries, unanimous. And then, we have the minutes of the executive session of July 28th. And I think these are matters that we would like not to release.
Correct. I move approval of the minutes of the executive session, minutes of July 28th, 2014 session.
And not released.
And then not to be released at this time.
Okay, we have two sections to these minutes, and now you, we have, that we have section one and section two, so maybe you could just make the motion to cover both sections?
Yes.
They're the same meeting?
Yeah.
Okay?
So moved, yes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, obviously?
There is one. There's a name left out on the first section of the minutes, what's a third of the way down, it says, Mr. Blank, and I think that needs to be filled in.
Okay. Callan can take care of that.
I'm not going to put the name in because I don't get.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And unanimous, the motion carries. So now, we'll move to the summary of actions. And the first are the administrative orders. The first is to accept a donation in the amount of $3,000 from Jim Gayham to the Recreation Department donation account to be used for permanent structures at the Sandwich Road Field Complex. Any questions? Well, if you want to hold them, just say so, and I'll read through them. Accept a donation in the amount of $750 from the East Falmouth Village Association to Manhaut Beach donation account. Approve a request from the 300 Committee to construct a boardwalk observation platform and ADA-compliant wetland path in T-Ticket Park. For, announce and sign the warrant for the 2000 state primary election on Tuesday, September 9th, the election from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And these are for all state constitutional offices, for senators in Congress, and the U.S., representative and senators in the U.S. Congress, the senators for, no senator for the state, representatives from the state, and county commissioner, not me. So, fourth is, fifth is to appoint the election workers for the year. These are the election workers for all the precincts here in the town of Falmouth. Approve and sign the state highway permit application for use of a portion of 28A for the Zuma race on Saturday, September 27th, 2014. Authorize an application for Library Early Childhood Resource Center grant. Appoint Susan Moran, Selectman Susan Moran, as the Selectman's representative to the Regional Beach Access Ad Hoc Committee. It's a committee that was formed by Selectmen in the various towns on the Cape to look at issues related to beach access. And the last is to approve the Recreation Center expenditure of $680 out of the Recreation Center donation account for the Boston Red Sox game on August 24th, 2014. This was, the Boston Red Sox contacted a number of municipalities and said, "If any of your employees are interested in attending a game and buying tickets, we will reserve a certain section of the grandstand, and you can have 50 tickets." So the Recreation Department kind of surveyed the town employees, and there seemed to be an interest, so the Recreation Department is chartering a bus, and up to 50 employees, I think probably 30 or so, have already bought tickets to the game. So this isn't for you guys, but it is for the employees. So, a motion? Or, does anyone want to hold any of these for discussion?
The funding for that is coming from the.
From the donation, from the donation account from the Falmouth Road Race. Yes, it's, no town funds are being used for this at all.
And the employees, Madam Chair.
And the employees are paying their own way, so, and they pay, what is it, $34 a ticket or something like that? All right, so.
I move approval of items 1 through 9.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oh, yes, Sam.
In the section on the T-Ticket Park, there was something about the Briebogle? We're doing that later, right? We're going to separate that out, and that's not part of this motion, that's all I want to clarify.
No, it is not part of this motion. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. We do have in our packet, a, it came in the packet, but it's not on the agenda, and it's a request from the 300 Committee regarding the Briebogle parcel. And Jessica's here, and maybe you could just describe this to us, and then we can decide if we want to just refer this to the town manager to process it, and then we can put it on our next agenda to finalize. Okay? Good.
Hello, Jessica Rittenhour, I'm the administrator at the 300 Committee Land Trust, and the item related to the Briebogle Conservation Area, which is a town-owned property, 67 acres, that was purchased in 2003 with land bank funding. The proposal for grant funding is to purchase materials needed to construct a new parking lot. The way that the property is configured now, the parking lot entrance is beyond the gate to the leaf compost facility. So when the compost facility is closed, the public is not able to access the Briebogle Conservation Area. So, the big picture is to improve the public access to that parcel, because the next set of projects down the road relate to open space rehabilitation, habitat enhancement, using funds that were donated by the former property owner Carl Briebogle. So the restoration plan is not before any town bodies now, but the idea is if we can get the public access improved and encourage folks to start using it, and then we'll do the restoration project once we get underway with the parking lot. So we're applying, hopefully, with the Conservation Commission, to the Barnstable County Land Management Grant Program, and they could fund the materials up to $4,500, and our request is actually for $3,000. The DPW has agreed to do the work as long as the materials can be purchased through grant funds. So John Lyons and Scott Schluter have been very helpful in putting together the parking lot plans, the budgets, so that all the information can be presented to the county.
So really, what this is, is the application for a grant. So it's not anything to do with the parcel. The parcel came before the Board of Selectmen a few years back, when the Briebogle family had an arrangement with the 300 Committee to transfer the title. I don't remember all the details, but all that has already taken place.
Exactly, right, yeah.
And this is simply applying for a grant to now make some improvements to the area so it can be more available to citizens in the community. So I think since we can't actually approve it tonight, we can ask the town manager to move the grant forward, and then he can come back to us at the next meeting, and we can sign off on that. Is that, if that's.
Yes.
Okay?
I'm very comfortable with that, with the board's consent.
I just want to recognize the 300 Committee for their leadership in bringing this project back to life. It's a project that there was a lot of investment enthusiasm and thought the Conservation Commission had a land management plan for the property going back, I don't know, five or six years. And so it's just great to see that there's a renewed interest in bringing more public access to the facility. It was a land, urban self-help grant application, if I remember. It was required to have a restoration plan filed with the state, so it's a great project with the Conservation Commission and the Land Trust to revive it and restore the property. It'll take time, I know.
Great. Work in progress.
A work in progress.
Thanks for your support.
Thanks, Jessica. So, I think we need a motion to ask the town manager to follow on with this, to follow on with the application for the grant, to bring back to us for a signature.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous.
Very good.
You can move forward, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, they were in the, I think everybody had that in their packet.
Originals? Okay.
No, they're not, no, I don't think any of this is, she has just a color printer.
Okay.
Can you give me that copy decision? I have to give it to you, sorry.
All right, now we come to special events, and the first one is a recurring recommended event, and this is the request for one-way traffic on Parsons Lane in McQuaid for the McQuaid Congregational Church event, community celebration which they have every year. Is there anybody here? No. But they do this each year. We, it's been approved by the police department, and does anybody have any questions, or would someone care to make a motion?
I move approval of the McQuaid Day celebration and the one-way traffic set up on Parsons Lane for Saturday, August 23rd.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. Motion carries. And next, we have a non-recurring, we have three non-recurring items here.
Pardon me, Madam Chair, this probably should have been standalone. So maybe just two non-recurring, and then just handle that one as a standalone.
Well, we have three, but two of them are really only non-recurring, so we'll start with the approval, up to approve an application for a wedding, a beach wedding on Falmouth Heights Beach on Tuesday.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. August 12th. I think the time is 5:15 to 5:45. Usually, that's a time when most people are not there, or at least have left the beach. I think there are, there are only a few cars. We have a note from the beach superintendent that the parking is limited, and, but I think from the application, there's really, there are about 35 people are planning to attend. And this would be right at the Falmouth Road Race finish line rock, which is located right across from the British Beer Company. So.
I noticed on the permit, it says, "Can't shuttle gas from Aricoy," and that's recommended by the beach superintendent, so that should be part, I think, of the motion when we make it.
To shuttle as many people as possible.
Right.
Because of the limited parking. The, yeah, as you were saying, the parking normally at that hour would be not a problem, except the people who go to the British Beer Company and the casino often park there, so the lot can get very full early on. So that's something to think about for the bridal couple. So is there a motion?
I think we need to think very quickly.
Think, yeah, like now.
There appears to be something of a commitment on the part of the applicant in the application itself, but I don't know whether that is written in by somebody that received this application, but anyway.
Should be a requirement, not a suggestion, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. All right, a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion that we accept that the wedding of Brian Clark tomorrow from 5:15 to 5:45 be accepted.
Well, that's, yeah.
With the requirement that there be a shuttle as is suggested on the permit, is that what you're, no, I was not, I was not putting that option.
We'll make it a suggestion.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. The next is another wedding on Falmouth Heights Beach on Saturday, September 6th.
I move approval.
Okay, I think they have in the application a possibility of a canopy if it rains.
Yep.
But I have a note here that I think the applicant was contacted, that no canopies are allowed on the beach.
Correct.
And only a few chairs for the elderly or disabled individuals. Otherwise, everybody else has to stand, but that's the way it is when you, okay, so, did you make a motion?
I did move approval of this with understanding that those regulations would have to be met.
Right.
Regardless.
And there's the second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. The motion carries. And now, the last is not an event, it's actually a one-day wine and malt license for the food truck festivals of New England at the Cape Cod Fairgrounds on Saturday, September 6th. I went to that last year, and it was awesome. So I tell you, if you don't plan anything on September 6th, but go to the fairgrounds.
Unless you're going to that wedding that we just talked about, right? Unless you're going to that wedding that we just talked about.
You're the wedding company?
No, no, sorry. But you know, if you're planning on going to that wedding, maybe don't miss it. You can come eat afterwards, so.
So you want to talk about the truck festival?
Yes, we are having our second annual Cape Cod food truck festival at the Cape Cod Fairgrounds on September 6th from 11:00 to 4:00, and we're requesting a one-day special liquor license to have a beer garden, along with our 22 food trucks and music, and some kids' activities, face painting, that kind of thing.
And you have your beer garden sort of cordoned off with fencing and all that?
Yes, it'll be gated.
Yeah.
And we have all E-Tip certified bartenders, and we have, I have spoken with the police to ensure that we have a detail if necessary, especially for the beer garden.
And the food is excellent, and the ice cream, too. So I highly recommend it.
For the minutes, could we have them identified?
Oh, yes, could you?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Bree Tarpey from Food Truck Festivals of New England.
Yes.
And Tony Jeffrey with Professional Bartending Service.
Okay, great. All right, any questions for these?
No, but I think your comments are correct.
You were there.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, a motion.
I move approval of the one-day wine and malt liquor license for Food Truck Festivals of New England on September 6th, 2014, Cape Cod Fairgrounds.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're going to have a lot of fun.
Hopefully you'll come join us.
All right, we don't have any public hearings tonight, so we will move on to our regular business. And the first is a discussion of the closure of, from Boston Street to Macasset Street, or Great Bay Street, from Boston Street to Macasset Street. Peter McConaty, welcome, our town engineer. So I look at the map, and there's been significant road closures on Great Bay Road, I noticed.
There has been, I don't know if you have, call it off.
Yes, we do.
Oh, you do have it, yes, we do. Okay, thank you. In the past, excuse me, yes, Peter McConaty, town engineer. In the past, we've had four road closures. This is a fifth road closure that we'll be looking to perform. It goes, it is from Macasset Street to Boston Street, it's approximately 200 feet, so there would be five road closures along that entire roadway. The first one was from Oak Street to Harrington Street, second one is Cypress Street to Philadelphia Street, the third one was Aricoy Street to Reynolds Street, the fourth one was Hiawatha Street to Providence Street, and this one would be Macasset to Boston for 200 feet. And this one would be Macassette to Boston, for 200 feet. And previous, I think we've done this twice in the past, I've had a PowerPoint, but it's basically the same, the same information, just additional road closure.
Questions from the board? Sam?
This is due to erosion?
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting some considerable amount of erosion along the bank. What's happening is the, the bank is eroding, and it's also, we're losing some of the brush and the vegetation that's on the, that's actually holding the bank together. So at this time, we do have a company working with some, putting some plans together to go for permitting in front of the Conservation Commission. It's soft solutions, they allow soft solutions, which would be a nourishment type on the beach, and a restoration of the bank with some plantings. But no hot element, would not be any hot element.
Could you at least go, as to what the potential timetable for that is? You know, so I know that there's some residents who are concerned that all we're doing is closing the road, and I've tried to reassure them, saying, no, there's a process we have to go through, just so people out there know, this is what the process is.
Right, we've been working with an engineering company since this past November, and to put some plans together for doing, for conservation and for permitting plans. And the plan, I've seen the plans, the plans are basic, they're in scattered areas along the roadway, it will not be the entire roadway. It's gonna basically be most of the sections that you see when these road closures, maybe some additional with the shrubbery and with the restoration of the plantings, but most of them will be in these areas of the closings. So the plan was to have the, to go through Conservation Commission, have approval, and go to town meeting, or have something for town meeting for requests for funding.
For this fall.
For this fall.
Correct. Thank you.
Is there anybody here in the neighborhood who would like to speak? Yes, Paula Lector. Good evening, Paula.
Hi, Paula Lector, I'm the Vice President of the Falmouth Heights Maravista Improvement Association. This came up at our annual meeting last week when some of the selectmen were there. The board hasn't had a chance to meet about this. I'm actually here to speak myself about this. All of the explanations that I've heard about why there are closures seem reasonable to me. But I think that there's been an unintended consequence, and that is that Great Bay Road has been left untended. Basically, there are holes that are up to nine inches deep. I've been riding my bicycle there for 12 years, I can no longer do it because it's either sandy or rocky, and the bike can slide out from under you. If there are people walking in either direction, one has to stop in order to get through. When it rains, the water stays on for, you know, four, five, or six days, sometimes a week. And I know that there have been requests to DPW to fix this, and there was one section where DPW came and did some fixing, but a couple of days later, it was just as bad because my understanding is that DPW has run out of hard fill and doesn't have any budget to fix that road. I know it's becoming the end of the season, but those of us who walk and bike and take babies and baby carriages, there are, you know, all year round, unless it's snowing. So I would love it if the Board of Selectmen would take a leadership role in, you know, in helping the DPW respond to this. And those people who are watching tonight, John Lyons is the head of the Highway Department, and he's the one who is in, would be responsible for grading. His phone number is 508-457-2543. So anyone who's concerned with the grading of that area, I mean, I would love to go back and be able to bike there, but it's just impossible at the moment.
Maybe we could ask Peter to respond to some of your concerns?
Yeah, I have talked with Peter about it.
No, I mean publicly now.
Publicly, yes, of course, thank you.
Thanks. Peter?
Yes, far as for the grading, it's a standard procedure, a phone call or an email to the Highway Department for grading the roadways. We got over 200 roads in Falmouth that are grade, that are gravel roads, just to go in there and grade the roads out. What we have had is we've had some difficulty recently with some of the roadways that we're bringing in fill and putting fill on roadways. I don't know if that would be the case on Great Bay Street, since the town of Falmouth isn't abut to the roadway, so I don't, I don't know if that would be a problem in this case. But it's basically just a request to the Highway Department, a call to the Highway Department and request grading of the roadway from one end to the other. The portions that we're talking about is from Oak Street all the way down to, well, it wouldn't be down to Monarch, but it would be at least to Boston Street, maybe a couple of streets south from that, but.
Well, maybe we could ask the Superintendent Lyons to maybe take a look?
We will, we'll do that, Madam Chair, yes.
And I think one thing we want to be careful of is if we grade the roadway, some of the portions where the stones have been placed and the sections of roads that were closed, we'll move them, grade the road, the stones, we move the boulders, we move back. We want to make sure when we grade that we keep the material away from the edge of the bank, because we don't want to do further erosion from the edge to the other of the bank, so. And one of the other projects that we're working with is there are, a lot of the roads that lead to Great Bay Street on that side of the roadway is private roads, but there are some that are public roads. So during this timeframe, we're gonna be trying to capture some of the stormwater that's going down those, basically it comes down Maravista, and then it goes down through those side roads, and it goes down towards Great Bay Street. So that's just exacerbating the problem on Great Bay Street. So as we move along, we're gonna be looking at putting additional drainage in at Maravista. A lot of the water coming down Maravista is actually going down the side streets, so we're gonna be trying to capture some of that. And there's two, there's two outfalls, one at Randolph Street and one at Reynolds Street. And what we're gonna be looking at doing is adding additional basins and storm drainage there to, we won't be able to remove the pipes, but we'll be able to cut back on a lot of the water that's going into those pipes in that area, which will, eventually it will save some of the banks in that area from the water running out of the ends of the pipes. It's a considerable amount of water that goes down, goes through that system. But so that's what we're working on, on the side streets coming into Great Bay Street, so.
I just, I mean, I go down into that area and look at it and see what you're doing, and then decide what I think about it. Is there an issue where the erosion, and where the worst of the erosion, I mean, you wouldn't walk near that. But then, if you're going to go from that area, that edge where the erosion starts, over to where the pavement ends, as it was previous, I just think, can they go in with those heavy trucks and do pavement when they are so close to the erosion?
Yeah, we wouldn't be doing any pavement on Great Bay at all. No, we wouldn't be doing pavement on Great Bay. We'd be putting drainage on some of the, some of the town-owned side streets. It'd be on the other side of Great Bay Street. It would be on the lower end of, one road that we're thinking of in particular is Reynolds Street. The end of Reynolds Street has very bad erosion. Anyone that's walked down the road, you can see the bad erosion, some areas, you can tell that some of it's washout. So it would be areas like that, we'd be looking at, between the intersection of Great Bay Street and Reynolds Street to.
Okay, but the previous speaker was talking about the holes in the road, and she's not able to ride her bike, and is there any way to take care of that, or is it too close to that edge?
Well, it's, that's an ongoing, you know, when vehicles drive down the roadways, if water gets caught into the roadway and gets into those puddles, it just makes it bigger and larger, the water softens, and it just, it sprays it out as the vehicles go down. Now, that was last year, or two years ago, now with several of those areas closed, there's no, I don't think there's much traffic going down the roadway, so you wouldn't have that problem. But as far as being able to move some of those boulders and having trucks go down the roadway to drop off some fill and grade the road out, I don't think that that would be a, I don't think that would be a big problem. As long as they stay from the bank. There's still, to get to the bank in most of those areas, there's two, there's still two to three feet to the, to the.
Two, three, over to the erosion?
Over to the edge of the roadway. Some areas are closer, but this is some area.
Sarah, please. No, thank you.
So, but as far as grading, that would just be a request that could go over to the Highway Department, and we could go from there to see about. I think, I think the grading request would not be a problem, I think that the, it's would be the fill, bringing in the fill to the roadways, so, if that's a possibility.
Thank you.
It's an ongoing, it's an ongoing, I appreciate, you know, the tolerance and the patience from the public, because it's an ongoing, this has been going on for many years. And the solutions that they're looking at doing for this roadway, depending on the storms that we get in the wintertime, could be three to a seven-year fix, and then we might be out there doing something else, but that's what they allow is a soft solution, so.
Yeah, I guess that's my question, is when do we come to a point where we discuss what the solution, whatever that may be, is? I mean, I know, I don't know what the solution is, but there has to be, I know you're considering some kind of a repair on the riprap side?
On the back side.
Or the coastal side?
Correct.
And then, and then the road, are we, do we have a plan in place, or are we just trying to now just take care of things as they are?
What we're looking at doing is, with the plan, we have a environmental consultant, he's creating a plan for the coastal bank, the areas of coastal bank to repair. As far as Great Bay Street, I mean, I think that's something that we can do in house. We've looked at tipping the road to the other side of the street, that's something, a lot of that area can be done in house. It's gonna require drainage. And, and like I had mentioned earlier, is a lot of those roadways are private roads, so if we do put drainage on some of those roads, it's gonna have to be at the intersection of Great Bay on those roads, so we're not into the layout of those, of those side streets.
So is there a date yet when you think that the environmental consultant will have something on?
I'm looking, I'm looking to have it filed, if it hasn't been filed in the last week, I'm looking to have it filed in the next couple of weeks. We've met the Conservation Commission out there a couple of times, and I was just out there two weeks ago with our environmental consultant, walking the entire project again. Actually, when this fifth road closure request came in, is when we went out again to look at the roadway to make sure we were not missing any areas, so.
Okay, so maybe we could get an update in the next month as to where we are with that?
Absolutely.
Put it back on the agenda? Sam?
I guess the question I have is, since this is a stormwater runoff, and it's part of the nitrogen, you know, infusion into Moore's Pond, is this gonna be done in harmony with the other efforts going into Leeuwen Pond? Are we gonna use the same kind of techniques and try to complement them?
No, basically what we're looking at doing is, well, it complicates the project a little bit more, is now they're looking at, they're doing the whole survey for that whole Maravista area for the, for the storage system. So whatever we do down there, we want to make sure we try to get at that at the same time, so we're not paving and repaving or ripping up some of the work that we've already done. But what we were looking at to do on Maravista Road is more of the traditional basins to get the water away from the bank, so you'd have more of a clean water coming out of those pipe outlets to the, to Great Bay, but also to stop the water from actually getting down to Great Bay. And then we'd have, would have to, what we would have to do is come up with a creative idea on Great Bay to take care of the water on that dirt road, so it would alleviate that. But once again, being a dirt road, it's hard to put drainage in a dirt road, it, you know, you get a year out of, two years out of, and they tend to fill up. We've had some luck in some of the other areas in town, what we've done, we've done an area at the end of Davisville Extension down by Foster Road. We did that a year and a half ago, it's working out very well, very large pipes under the ground with loam and seed over the top of it, so it, the loam and seed collects all the fines and all the, on the top of the soil, and then the water goes down into the pipe and carries it away, and at least it gets it off the roadway. So if we did something, we'd be looking at something like that. It's a tight roadway down there, some of the areas are 33 feet, some of the areas are 40 feet, so we'd have to work with what we got. And if you look at the roadway, the roadway's not centered in the layout down there, it kind of goes back, it weaves, it meanders back and forth inside, in the layout, so. So there'd be, there'd be some work to do. But I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be a tandem effort between the town and the consultant. The consultant is specifically looking at the coastal bank, and we'd be working in tandem with that to keep the water away, as much as we could away from the coastal bank. To be, because right now, it's a, it's a walking path, it's a pedestrian path, and if we get a grader than bicycle, we'd be able to go on the roadway, but there's a lot of sections of roadway that's not, vehicles are not allowed on it, so I think it did reduce the traffic on it for now to take care of that portion of it, but.
Well, maybe now that there's less traffic in some of those sections, any kind of improvement might last a bit longer, so people could walk on it and ride, ride their bikes on it a lot more easily than what they had then.
We're planning on, we're planning on having something for town meeting.
Something for town meeting?
Something for town meeting.
Oh, good.
Something to look at. And if there's, if we do a, an update in another month or so, I'll see if I can get some plans and some better presentation.
That'd be good. That would be very helpful to do that.
I think.
And then it'll give us more of an idea of what's coming up with town meeting as well. Okay.
I move approval of the closure from Great Bay Street from Boston Street to Macassette Street.
A second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, okay, you had your hand up, okay. If you have, if you come to the microphone, please, and speak into the microphone, because people at home are interested in hearing what you have to say, they tell me.
The road along Great Pond, Great Bay Road, where they used some stones where the path has eroded, specifically between Harmony and Macassette, that area got eroded, I think it was in 95, when Hurricane Bob came through. And a large stone barrier, break wall, has been put in, I think that goes from Harmony all the way to, actually to Boston Road. And it seems like, I was there today, looked at it, and it looks like it's holding fine. The, the one area that really is very restricted and narrow, for any of the bikers, you can't have a carriage there because the stone's so close. And that's the road that's been blocked between Harmony and Macassette. In one spot, the, from the bushes to the stone, it's about 27, 28 inches. At the other end, it's closer to 40 inches, okay? And two people can't be walking back and forth, and there's loads of poison ivy there. I was wondering, rather than, that particular section is very narrow, you, there's no way without changing the stone wall that's been put in, that you could put a road there, if ever. I'm wondering whether, rather than having boulders that are quite large, that take up quite a bit of space, some other barrier to keep cars and traffic from going, that would not take up as much space, that would allow more room between the barrier, right now, the boulder's about this big, or a larger, and the, it's taking up a good deal of whatever space there is on that flat. I'm wondering whether, I'm sure there's designs that you can embed in the, in the ground, posts that are secure and solid, and I, that would provide easily another foot and a half on either side, maybe more, allowing another three feet. That becomes a more practical path. And by the way, it is a favorite spot where many, many people, bikers, joggers, people with pushing carriages. The other, the other problem I have with that area is puddles galore, I don't know, you may have, I came in late. But for years, I've complained about that, and I know there's some restrictions with the conservation, but it, these are large, they basically cover the whole width of the road. You're either brushing along the poison ivy on the side or walking on someone's lawn, and that lasts for three to five days after a good rain. That really needs to be filled. I've always felt, I've had a place there for 25 years, and always felt that it's been a stepchild, that we really don't get the attention. Years ago, I'm told that they used to, the Highway Department used to trim so that you could, they would maintain the vista, that's why people would walk along there. It's sporadic throughout, where some people, and I don't blame them, trying to get some whatever vista they have. And I'm off of a massive soy, and it tends to grow high. And the poison ivy is a problem. The other issue is boaters or people walking along the roads, there are no trash cans. I wind up collecting stuff on the, along the beach and putting them in bags and taking them off. I'd like to see something like what's being done at Falmouth Heights, to where the town would maintain and. the, the town would maintain and periodically come and pick up whatever trash has collected. They have to be secure and they have to be aesthetically pleasing, that's, that's my views. But the, the issue of, of the barriers, where you need them, I would hope that we would come up with something that was a little smaller, had some aesthetic appeal to it and just not boulders, just dropped in the way, it's just sort of, my, my view was is we're, we're just pushing the cut down the road and not doing anything to really address the problems, maybe what I heard, I don't know when that, 'cause it's been like that for quite a while. It, it's, it's actually fairly discouraging as far as I'm concerned.
He didn't introduce himself.
Yeah, oh yes, could you state your name for the record, please?
Richard Paglia, P-A-G-L-I-A, Massasoit Street.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Somebody else, yes, Mr. Finneran?
Mark Finneran, Precinct 6. This problem on Mare Vista of erosion, road water runoff, should have been part of the wastewater plan. If I brought it up once, I brought it up 40 times and it was basically poo-pooed. These soft efforts that he's, that Peter's proposing are basically just shoveling dung against the tide. Until you weave road water runoff into the wastewater plan to deal with this, nothing is gonna help and it should be part of it because a great deal of nitrogen flows into those bays because of this. And I hear a lot of lip service, but I don't see anybody moving forward on this and it's definitely necessary, and as I said, it should have been part of the wastewater plan in the first place, which I'd also like to add, people of East Falmouth voted against as a whole 51 and a half percent. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak? Well, I think we can certainly take all these comments under advisement and when you come back again in another month or so, maybe you can address some of those comments that were made today and how we can maybe adjust in some way.
I, I think as an immediate response, depending on, I, I don't believe we'll be doing and going against the Conservation Commission if we can go out and look at the grading, it seems like some of the comments that I've heard was the grading and the, and the holes. The other thing is, is if, with the boulders, we can, I mean, we can look at spaces or what have you with the boulders, we wanna make sure that pedestrians and.
Right.
If it's, if it's graded and people can walk down it and bikers can drive and ride down the road, we wanna make sure that, you know, it's a pleasurable, pleasurable road bike.
That would be good. Any other questions or comments for Peter? Oh, yes, sir? If you come up and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Scott. My grand mother grew up in the city since 1945. In 32 Sycamore Street, when they built this yellow house, they were told they couldn't plant any grass on the conservation, 'cause they didn't want all the nitrogen going in and they was fouled, they're gonna never plant grass. And why didn't they continue with stuff like that? Why do we keep changing all this stuff? They had this idea that they planted 20 years ago and now they let these big houses go and be built with all this grass. And why does conservation stick to one thing? That they put stones so they wouldn't have any grass, so there would be no way, we're worried about irrigation, how much water is wasted, water and grass, and these people had to put stones in. It's recorded in Bountiful County. And I talked to them quite a bit and they just said, how can we get to do it? And then all, all the years later, all get changed. And in front of my house, my grandparents' house, it's been there since 1945, they used to put dirt in, they used to come by with the whole thing and blow everything down with the machine and cut everything nice. And they came by and graded about two weeks ago, there's about a 10-inch drop now that goes down to the ground. People are getting old, the way my parents are, and you can fall down, it's worse now than it was before, and you can go swimming there when it goes in. I don't know, conservation doesn't allow dirt anymore, what problems else they have, 'cause I don't find, frankly, they didn't know what they're doing either, along with a lot of other things, because you can see the difference. I finally used to be able to walk from 231 Great Bay Road to the point back, have scallops for all of us, and then capable, and all these houses get built and this guy can't have grass, this guy can have grass, and, or you can't go over this footprint. And we could build a house the size of a monster, as long as it was enough money and a lot of load. And that's all my concerns are, they should stick to one plan. I think the plans of the rocks are a very good idea when they did that. If you people would ride, ride that house, 32 Sycamore, it's a yellow house, it's all stones, there's no grass, they didn't want any grass in to build that house, and that was a very good idea at the time. It would save a lot of nitrogen and a lot for our bay, but they changed it 'cause people didn't like it and everything just, all builders seem to get what they want done and it's where the town seems like it runs. And I haven't seen a lot of changes, this town is going down hell, it's just been going down, 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 that's all I've seen. That's all I'd like to say, thank you for all your time, and we've gotta strive to work together and prove this town the way it used to be, because it's nowhere it was. And my grandparents bought that place, my grandparents bought that from a woman who owned that Great Bay Road, and she loved it, she said it was not to be blacktopped by nothing but dirt, and she only paid $500 for it, she wrote her letters to the woman, and the woman said, Jesus, the only piece of land I got left of Falmouth, she said, I just wanted to keep it for a tax bill, and she said, we used to have a whole farm there, 'cause the water was all natural barriers, the cows and the goats, and they had a whole big farm there. So my grandmother ended up buying it from a, a long story shot back when you had the town hall books, she went through all the things and did all that stuff. And then, then they used to bring sand and stuff and it all went off, everything was all right, and they used to trim the bushes and kinda take care of it, but then, over the years, I couldn't see the whole thing going down, 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 as big houses are being built and everything else, and it's just, I don't know why they didn't stick like with this poor guy with the stones to save on nitrogen, people were going mowing the lawns, and that's all going in, they put fertilizer in. And the toilet, the sewer system is probably gonna help us all, but fertilizing lawns and all the other stuff has a lot to do with this. People want green grasses, they want, they want, they wanna come down beautiful, they're bringing the city, the cave. There's been no fertilizer on my mother, grandmother, grandfather's lawn since 1945, since they bought it, and the grass gets greener every year, gets a little brown, but who cares, it's getting caught, that's the way it's supposed to be, all lovely little grass and, or about all little things, and that road used to, they used to dump it right at night and it used to be level, and there was no problems with washout. These, these big snowstorms, these, this was an awful winter, that's what this, this lawns rolled in, they did a lot of damage, so, I've been talking to Conservation, yeah, we stopped and talked, we had a few words, but they pushed the snow right over the bank and they ripped the bank apart and they froze.
So we, we really appreciate your comments, but we're really talking about the, the road closures tonight?
Yeah, well, this is all part of the road closure, the snow piles have been pushing that all over. I was gonna say, this is all I wanted to tell you, that's all I wanted to say.
Well, thank you very much.
And thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
And that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would care to speak? No? Oh, Peter.
One comment, one comment that I did not mention was, there's a house at the end of Boston Street, it's actually a, has a, has a garage on Great Bay Street that we will be blocking off, and we've already spoken with the resident and he's been fine with that, so.
Okay.
We'll be blocking off to his garage for now, I think he might be doing something temporary with his yard, but he's, he's okay with that.
Okay.
Just wanted to make that comment.
All right, thank you.
Ma'am Chair, you have a motion in a second?
Yeah, I know.
I'm not sure there was a recorded vote as yet?
No, we have not voted as yet.
Okay.
That was part, that was, yes.
You're on top of it, thank you.
Yes, so we have a motion in a second to, to.
Motion for Boston?
Yes, the motion, if you can all remember, was to close Great Bay Street from Boston Street to Bocasset Street. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous, the motion carries. So that brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is a request from Mr. Dunin to place a, to install a stop sign on the intersection of Worcester Avenue and I think Nantucket Street. If you recall, we continued this from a discussion we had two weeks ago, we asked for more information from the Traffic Advisory Committee, and I think you will see that they had a special meeting and, and took this up in, in much more detail. And is there anybody here from Traffic Advisory? No, you're here. Yes, Barbara?
All three of us.
All three of you? Do any, either, any of you wanna speak or I'll just, Officer Porter, no? Great, thank you.
Hello, Officer James Porter, Vice Chair of the Traffic Advisory Committee. We initially took this, someone came to a meeting with this request and for just matters of clarity, I take responsibility for not being as clear on the minutes, when I developed the minutes, I don't think I was clear as far as our request, which led to, which led to this confusion. Basically, we did not recommend a stop sign, we recommended the DPW cleared the vegetation, we advised him to come to the Selectmen's meeting and request a stop sign. Our main reasons for not recommending the stop sign, as Barbara pointed out in the memorandum, did you receive a copy of the memorandum?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so first off, when you're developing a multi-way stop, stop sign, the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is basically the standard that engineering and everyone uses when, when putting forward any type of new signage or any type of roadway items, it says first off, it should be based on an engineering study, which we don't, don't have an engineering study currently, the engineering study is quite in-depth. Some other items that they recommend as far as if you're going to change to a multi-way stop, stop signs, five or more reported crashes in a 12-month period that are susceptible to correction by a multi-way stop installation. At first, we reported that there weren't any accidents in the area, I know this may be hard to imagine, but the databases aren't very simple, the search at the police department. So as I looked into it a little bit more, we did find four. Of the four, the officer's report found that three, three of them were people blew the stop sign that were currently there, and the fourth accident was an issue with vegetation, somebody couldn't, couldn't see because of the vegetation. So it did not meet the five crash criteria, and additionally, adding the stop sign would not have stopped those, those accidents anyways because people weren't following the sign that is, signs that are currently there. When I went out, I took some, some photos before the Traffic Advisory Committee meeting, when I took the photos of the intersection, one of the residents, the number 13, came out and kinda echoed our idea about that they're not stopping at the, the stop signs that are in existence, so I don't know that two other stop signs are gonna cause any effect on the accidents. Additionally, it's common practice that the roadway that has less traffic is the one that should stop or yield, which would be Nantucket Ave. And I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Between those options, those reasons and then also fiscally, it would cost about $300 for two more stop signs plus the town's time to, to emplace them, and, and setting the precedence of, of putting unneeded stop signs in areas that people should follow the, the current signage, that's basically why we, we did not recommend the stop sign.
Well, I just want to say that you and your committee did exactly what we asked you to do, was to give us that information, so that would help us to make our decision, and I want to thank you for doing that.
Thanks.
Does anybody have any further questions of Officer Porter? Yes, Doug?
Could you just clarify on, it's been claimed both directions on Worcester Ave, that this is the only intersection that does not have a stop sign heading from the beach? It's been, actually, one thing that's reported and everyone says, oh no, there are a bunch of places where it doesn't happen. Could you, in your estimation, I did not have a chance to get down there today to count exactly what it was, but.
I believe there, there's a stop sign at Lake Lehman, there's a stop sign at Jericho, but those are both much more traveled roadways. As far as any other intersections, I'm not sure if Bob or Barbara may be able to.
Grand Ave.
Grand Ave is a stop sign, so it is true that there are a multitude of stop signs in, in other locations, but those are.
But not every single one.
Not, not every single one, and those are also more highly traveled roadways.
Okay, thank you.
You'll have your opportunity to speak.
Anybody else have any further questions of Officer Porter?
No, I think we had ample amount of information, if I had to count, I think of all the issues that we've talked about and we have this much on stop signs, so, but I went through them.
Sam?
I did have a question, I don't, live in this area, so I don't observe it on a regular basis, but how much play activity is in that median strip there on Worcester Ave? Do we have any pedestrian safety issues?
Oh, there's definitely a significant amount of, I mean, there's kids playing, there's people playing frisbee, the, the median strip is definitely used, there's no, I don't think anyone would have any contention about that.
But that's not being cited as a reason for this additional stop sign?
There haven't been any pedestrian accidents that I'm aware of as far as a vehicle striking a pedestrian, so as far as that's concerned, not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Mr. Dunin, did you wanna comment? And then we'll come back to you, Ms. Lipton.
Tim Dunin, Worcester Ave, so, you know, decision's fine, but I just wanna say, I would have appreciated that update eight months ago when I went to the TAC, so, you know, it's kind of a lot of wasted time on everyone's part here, so. That being said, I do want to say that there is a stop sign on every intersection going up from Worcester Ave to Worcester Court, right, except at the Nantucket Ave, so it is what it is, but it just would have been helpful to have that eight months ago, and I realize, you know, some things are overlooked, but, you know, for the sake of efficiency for other citizens going forward, I'd like to get a little tighter here going forward.
Thank you. Barbara? Barbara Pratt from the Traffic Advisory Committee?
I may have an additional comment.
And then Paula.
My name is Barbara Pratt and I am the Chair of the Traffic Advisory Committee. When we deny a person's request, we are, the process is that the Board of Selectmen is the group that we considers requests that we deny. When we deny a request, we tell the person requesting, your next step is to go to the Board of Selectmen. So it's up to them to go and get put on the agenda for the next step. I don't know why that didn't happen this time, but when we do deny someone, we always tell them the next step that you have to go to is the Board of Selectmen. And I heard last week that there were five people on the committee and four approved it and one denied it. There are only four people on the Traffic Advisory Committee and we usually, we have a varied amount of expertise and we are usually able to listen to each other and come to a unanimous decision. And we did come to a unanimous decision on this stop sign and denied the request. Why it wasn't followed up on, I don't know.
Thank you very much. Officer?
Additionally, I just wanted to add that any, all the information that I just presented is available for public record at the police department, so you can come get the actual crash reports, if anybody ever brings anything to us or to the Board of Selectmen revolving this, this type of issue, you can get any of the crash reports unless there's some type of criminal action taken. So the public is able to research this if they want, wanna try to, you know, if they have any, any issues with any information that's presented. Also, as an advisory board, once we make our recommendations, the town manager can either approve or deny and then additionally, they can appeal to the Board of Selectmen, so there's always other options for people to go forward if they aren't happy with whichever decision that we, we make.
I do appreciate your mentioning about the minutes and would encourage in the future for, if it's approval, to say approved, if it's denied, to actually worth, put the word denied, but refer to the Board of Selectmen, just so as we go back and look at it, it becomes a little clearer as to what exactly happened.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Lipton?
Through you, Madam Chairman, I have a question for Sergeant Porter.
Sure.
When I walk up and down. When I walk up and down Worcester Court, there, there is no sidewalk and there's no real place for anybody to walk and it's difficult for anybody with baby carriages or carrying chairs, you know, to walk on the grass. And in the heights, we've looked at this, I mean, I read minutes from the 1980s when there have been requests for sidewalk in that area. And now we're looking at, you know, the possibilities of asking for something, just a median strip in the middle with no grass, that's maybe just a dirt path. But my question for Sergeant Porter is, are, were any of these accidents because possibly people coming out of Nantucket at the stop sign were watching people walking kind of in the, you have to walk in the street if you're on, you know, if you're uneasy walking on the grass, you have to walk in the street. And if people are walking in the street opposite where people are coming out of Nantucket, they might not be looking at the stop sign, but looking at the people. So I was wondering if that was a factor in any of these accidents?
The accident reports that I've reviewed don't, do not have any statements regarding anyone who's looking at pedestrians or trying, trying to stop for pedestrians. We can only go off of what the officer's narrative says in the report and he usually bases it off the evidence that's on the scene as well as any statements from the operators. The only one that had to do with line of sight, I believe, was the vegetation, the issue with, somebody said that they were stopped at the sign, they couldn't see the car coming because of the vegetation and then they went through the stop sign, which we tried to address by having the DPW trim the bushes or recommending the DPW trim the bushes. So not that I'm aware of, ma'am. But it is, for the record, I completely agree with her, there, there isn't a sidewalk. People are walking in the roadway. You have tons of people going to the beach, so it is something, you know, we could entertain something in the future of trying to solve that problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Mr. Mocley, nice to see you.
Thank you very much. Tom Mocley, Precinct 6. First of all, I'd just like to thank the Traffic Advisory's work on this, the Selectmen for hearing it multiple times, and of course, Mr. Doonan for being persistent. I think he has to have a lot of credit for coming back over and over again to both boards on this issue. And I think it's a headache for everyone in the room, this issue has been. The sergeants, I mean, the officer, his two main reasons seem to be that, first of all, we didn't reach the five, we only reached four of the five accident reports. And I'm not really sure I agree with the logic that we should wait for something bad to happen. I think erring on the side of safety would be the smart choice. The other issue of people not even using the signs anyway, so what's the point of putting it up? Don't really see much point in that logic either. I do understand and I agree with the Traffic Advisory's position of following the manual to the T in order to save the town money. And so I would also be curious to know whether or not the town would consider putting this stop sign up with more intent if there was a donation made to fund the stop sign. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Then we'll come back to the board. Doug?
One thing I did hear the officer mention was, it wasn't just the number, it wasn't that the people were disobeying the stop sign, it was more, would an additional stop sign change it? Would, would the recommendation of the advisory committees, would this stop sign have eliminated those accidents? And the recommendation was that they did not feel the stop sign would do it, as opposed to simply, nope, there was only four, it wasn't five, it was really, would the additional sign make a difference or not?
I think the other point was that the people who caused the accident were coming from the street that had a stop sign and they were ignoring the stop sign or, for whatever reason, they...
So put another one?
Well, going the, the other direction. I travel that way fairly frequently. If I'm coming from the east end of Falmouth and I'm going back across, I often go that direction and I'm very familiar with where the stop signs are and where they're not. And I realize having, doing it more often makes me more aware of what to look for, whereas people who are fairly new or here on vacation would know and wouldn't pay attention. But, so we have the recommendation from the Traffic Advisory Committee, which is not to approve a stop sign at this intersection at this time, since there is one on the opposite. We'd make a, remember, this is a one-way, the one-way street because the, the median separates the roads in both directions, so it's only a road that is going one direction. So this, in fact, if it were there, it would be a two-way stop sign. It would mean that people coming this way and going this way would have to stop. So that's just the facts of the matter. So what is your pleasure?
Three-way. Three-way, because Nantucket is, goes both directions.
No, but at that, at that particular intersection, it only, Nantucket, yes, I see what you're saying, but there is a stop sign coming the other way. Okay, so what is your pleasure?
Do you want to take the recommendation of the Traffic Advisory Committee or do you wish to take a different motion?
No, I think we have followed that, that we take the recommendation of whatever committee it is. And in driving down and going through there and talking to people there, I, I do not see the purpose of another stop sign.
Anybody else? Sam?
I guess I'm, I don't want to agree a little bit with Ms. Mop and not completely. I do appreciate the recommendation of the Traffic Advisory Committee. I do appreciate Mr. Doonan coming forward saying that his next process is to come to us and I want us to seriously consider it, not just automatically go with the recommendation because otherwise there is no point to the appeal. And so I do appreciate the work the Traffic Advisory Committee does. I would agree that I do not, would not be supporting a stop sign at this place because it does not fit the, the other some of the qualifications.
So your final, your final thoughts?
You want to make the motion?
This really, well, it requires a positive motion, doesn't it?
The, the recommendation is to, well, you have to make the motion to either deny placing a stop sign there or approve a stop sign.
I would move that we deny placing a stop sign as requested by the legislature.
I'll second.
You'll second it? All right, now we have a discussion on the motion. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
I have no further discussion after I have read through everything here on the stop sign.
Sam?
I would just say that, you know, the, the regulations seem to be well thought out and to me makes sense. The issues of pedestrian concerns are ones that linger with me, but I don't think the stop sign is going to address those unfortunately. It is a very busy area, especially in the summertime, and it seems to me that pedestrian access is a, a problem that needs to be addressed somehow or other. I have no idea what the solution is, but I'm uncomfortable with that. There ought to be some designated pedestrian way through this area.
With that median, you think you couldn't?
Well, yeah, I, I know there's shrubs in the other sections of this median area, so it might not be easy to put a sidewalk through that section, but that's, that's im, that's not related to the stop sign.
But it's something that we might suggest that the DPW take a look at, is if there were to be, there's Peter sitting back there.
Have already looked at it.
Oh, you've already?
Have already come through some.
I'm sure you have.
You know, I don't want to take away from this, the stop sign with the decision, but I believe it's been brought up before, in the past and it's actually, we went through some real, just real sketches and what we could do out there. And there are options that can be done out there as far as sidewalks and barriers, so if that's something that the town...
So at some point when we have some funding?
If that's something that the town wanted to pursue, that it could do it. And you'd want to do it in a way that pedestrians would use it. I think if it was down the center of the grass strip, pedestrians would have to walk from each side to get down the center of the grass strip, but if we were able to do something on each side, might, on the grass, on the median side.
On the median side.
Side, but we might be able to do something.
Okay, all right, well, that's...
That might be something we might want to monitor with pedestrian traffic down there.
Right.
I know there's a lot of pedestrians when you go through that area, you can see them, the Falmouth Heights Beach is right there, so.
Exactly.
Well, if you're driving down there towards the beach, you're, you're behind them walking and they see you when they move over. And the same is true coming back.
Right.
People just walk in the street and you have to be careful.
Right.
You really do.
So, so we do have a, the public works, we do have a roadway program, but we have a sidewalk program too. And a lot of it's, the sidewalks, we do some restoration systems of some, of the sidewalks that we do have, but that could be something we could add it to the list that we could look at in the future.
I mean, certainly it is a road that's used as a bit more of a speedway than it should be. And, you know, as opposed to stop signs, maybe also other ways of slowing down the traffic.
I think, I think one of the, of Worcester Court, it's a wide roadway, it's a very, as Selectman Jones had mentioned, it's a, it's a very wide roadway, so when roads get wider, people start to think that they have more room, they can go faster. So I think you want to kind of bring that in a little bit.
So space for a sidewalk.
And this, and this, and this ways, there's ways that can be done.
So actually, you could put a sidewalk in on the right side?
There's room.
Where the right, where the curbs are, or not curbs, but wherever they are.
Well, it'd be on the, on the median strip side, but yeah, there, there is room to do if they wanted to put something in.
Right.
I think that would be a, that would be a whole discussion amongst themselves because it'd be in, it'd be in front of the Selectmen that's gonna, it would affect the, the green area.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, the motion carries.
Madam Chairman, may I just comment in my, to echo the appreciation of the Traffic Advisory Committee adjusting their schedules to have a special meeting to report back to the Board of Selectmen within the, that two-week period. So I want to thank Barbara Pratt as Chair and Officer Porter as Co-Chair and also the other members of that committee who do their diligent work on behalf of the, on behalf of the board. We thank you all.
And I would agree and thank you for being here tonight. Also, I think too, it might be in your future thinking and plans to keep this road in, in your mind in terms of the amount of traffic and maybe periodically take a look at what the pedestrian and auto patterns are from time to time and then come back and let us know at some point if you think that maybe there's something that we might need to do, either, either corrective or in terms of sidewalks, which is something we might be able to do in the not-too-distant future. So thank you very much. Okay, with that, we will move to, let's find my agenda. I keep losing it. Here it is. All right, the next is individual selectmen's reports. Anybody have anything? Go ahead.
I have some.
Good.
I attended the West Falmouth Library Volunteer and Scholarship Recipient Celebration and in tune with the fact of libraries being the hearts of the villages, the community just got together and celebrated Kyle Francis Hampton's receiving the Arthur Hennessy Scholarship and Margaret Caroline Falcone and Jane Hugh receiving the Colonial. So I was pleased to be attending that function. And then just before this meeting, I attended at the Atria the Kiwanis kind of welcome to Falmouth first event. And, you know, that, that's something that the business community I know has been interested in starting and I just wish them luck with that.
Good. Sam?
I guess first of all, I participated in the, the school system strategic planning kickoff. I know Sue was there as well. It was on the 29th and was well represented by members of the community as well as the school department itself. And was, you know, a full day kind of activity. Anyway, pretty kind of comprehensive. I also attended the senior center site selection public hearing on the 30th and that was also a very large, well-intended meeting, excellent questions. I attended the CPC meeting on July 31st. Couldn't make it to the East Falmouth Association Annual Meeting, unfortunately. The, I agree with your observations about the national night out and really appreciate the police department opening up their buildings for public tours. My wife and I thoroughly enjoyed walking through the police station, had never seen all of the resources that were available there and also watching the exhibition of the drugs.
Of the KNO.
And how they were used.
Yeah.
They did an excellent job of that. And then also I planned, I attended the bike waste planning meeting on August the 6th where, again, it was a very large turnout and a lot of people had the opportunity to really voice their concerns about bike access and ability to use bicycles for transportation throughout the town. I thought it was actually an excellent meeting where a lot of people brought out ideas of possible ways to accommodate bicycle use within, in the town. The last item is just, if it's appropriate, I was reading the Cape Cod Times tonight and noticed that Caitlin, pardon the misspelling, a mispronunciation of the words, but Caitlin Steinkie is a para-roller and apparently is preparing to compete in the para-rowing championship in Amsterdam this August. And I thought, that's kind of neat, but it's also for me just a reminder of how many amazingly talented, multi-talented people there are here in Falmouth. We see them working in these various committees that serve our, our town, but we also see them, you know, challenging themselves in these sort of kind of competitive events. And it was, it was one of those articles that reminds you to count your blessings and then appreciate what people do, you know, to really use the, the capacity that they have to really strive and achieve and challenge themselves. So it was neat to see in our going, Ms. Steinkie lives in East Falmouth, so I bring that up just to mention that.
Anybody else? No? You know, I thought this was on the agenda. It was, I thought it was on the original, oh, we already did it, okay. That was pointing you to the ocean access. I just wanted to mention that I attended, along with some of you, the Neighborhood Association meetings, the East Falmouth Village Association, the Falmouth Heights Maravista, Becky, you were there, Association Meeting, I think you were there too, and also the Old Stone Dock Association. And I thought after being, and I think the East Falmouth one is coming up, I think there's this scheduled either this week or next week. And I thought, when you really go to these neighborhood associations, you realize how much they do for their neighborhoods. It is amazing the amount of volunteer time and money that they spend. And I think it's great that they have the, the freedom to contact the town, the DPW, the police department, whatever it may be, with their concerns and someone from those departments go and meet with them and help them resolve their issues. And this one at the Seacoast Shore, they usually have one too, but I didn't see that come up.
I haven't seen that yet.
But it's amazing how the neighborhood associations really take care of themselves very, very well.
And the responsiveness.
And the responsiveness that the town provides to them too is amazing. Not one neighborhood association made any comment about if they contact the town, no one responds. They get an immediate response, no matter what department it is, and whoever it is comes out and meets with them and they help them work through their issues. So I thought that is just a huge plus for this town. And, and then maybe it helps to lessen the number of emails that we get. I mean, I figure if they think they can work with their associations and get things done, it means they don't have to come to the Selectmen because I don't get as many emails as I used to get, so that's pretty good. And one more thing I wanted to remind everyone is that the road race is this weekend, Sunday morning at 9:00 a.m. It starts an hour earlier than last year, so, so anybody who's heading down that way, it's nine and not 10. Doug, are you running? Or you were gonna say that?
I have a number and I'm gonna try to run. I also wanted to mention, I went to Mr. Sousa last night, a wonderful event up at Highfield. About 800 or 900 people were there for the bluegrass on a lawn festival.
Oh, yes.
Which was just a fantastic use of that property that is, you know, still owned by the town, at least to the organization. It's just, it really is a fantastic event that was held up there.
That's great.
And I think they've been doing it every year. It's free, ponce it on the grass to come and enjoy.
There are not many of those. The...
Pat, I will speak to the beach. I did attend the beach access committee and it is incredibly interesting. The big picture is that it's gonna deal, it's an ad hoc committee of a lot of experts in Selectmen and town officials from the entire Cape to coordinate efforts, including such things as the endangered species and how to balance that with the need to make the beaches accessible while protecting those important resources, plovers for example. And what's being considered is that the state is going to receive authority from the federal government to have hands-on monitoring, which allows much more flexibility in, in making specific problem-solving solutions that don't just say, well, you can't go to that beach, period. It could, for an example, you could maybe consider removing the nest if that's appropriate to do it at the time and continue your beach access. And it's gonna deal with bigger things such as dredging. And it's going to deal with bigger things, such as dredging, uh, that's another issue. Public access to beaches versus, uh, private claims, so it's really a good example of coordination of assets and resources, and it's putting a lot of smart people in the room who are experts, and giving that expertise, um, to all of the towns in, in one meeting, so I'm, I'm really pleased to have gone to the first meeting, we're going to meet bi-monthly, and I'll give reports as we go along.
Where did they hold the meeting?
Cape Cod Commission.
Oh.
Excuse me, there was my voice. Uh, we drove an hour in the rain to get there, so it was, but, you know, of course, the, after the busy season comes, it won't be such an, an issue, but it was kind of funny that everyone came in looking kind of like a drowned rat and having sat in traffic for a long time. But that just shows, you know, kind of the camaraderie, and, and like I say, the common, the commonality in trying to balance these, you know, protecting important, you know, endangered species versus still, you know, allowing access and serving the public, so it, it's a very good, uh, very good committee.
As I remember, what the organizers of this group did was to ask the Commission if they would help facilitate the meetings for them, a place, you know, having agendas and all that sort of thing.
Another great, uh, example where the Cape Cod Commission just can bring things together, streamline, and facilitate.
Good. Okay, anybody else? Could you pass me those signatures? Mr. Suso, Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. A few additional items. As the Board is aware, we've received, we have received a confirmation, uh, from the Coast Guard that the town's licensing letter of interest for an obscur light, which the Board recently authorized, has been received and is being processed, and, uh, we anticipate that a site visit to the lighthouse property will be forthcoming in the future. Also, under separate cover, the Board will be receiving an electronic copy of the draft of five-year strategic plan document, which the Board developed at your recent, uh, retreat in June, and we ask that you please review and comment on this draft, uh, when you do receive it, in anticipation of bringing it, uh, to you for consideration for adoption. Speaking about beaches, I'm, as the Board will recall, we had, uh, a portion of a beach cordoned off with two, uh, a piping plover nest, uh, near Trunk River, and, uh, I'm happy to report that two of the four hatchlings survived, and, uh, that the, uh, I'm advised by, uh, Mark in Conservation that the barricades will be removed, because I guess they are viable at this point, and unfortunately, two of the four, uh, were, uh, snatched by crows. Uh, but I also want to, uh, uh, thank the public, uh, and all those involved for their cooperation in, uh, helping to protect those endangered species, and my hats off to, uh, our colleagues in the Conservation Commission staff, Jen, Mark, uh, and also Public Works, John Lyons and others, for their work in, uh, providing protection to that, uh, to that nest in adjacent, nearby Trunk River. Also, uh, just echoing some comments that members of the Board already made, I was pleased also to, uh, attend the recent Bike Way Committee Public Meeting, and also compliment, compliment, uh, to Chief Dunne on National Night Out. Uh, was pleased to attend the Senior Center, uh, Site Meeting as well. And, uh, I did want to confirm, uh, that on Friday, uh, as we had discussed, the Golf Course Management, RFP, was issued. Uh, a, uh, a review copy of that will be on the town website in the very near future, for those that would like to review, and in that, uh, there are certain procurement channels that we are required to go through, and I appreciate, uh, the, uh, yeoman's job done by Jennifer Petit and Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper, Finance Director Jennifer Petit, uh, for their great help in, uh, working with all, the Golf Advisory Committee and others, in assembling that, uh, as well as our consultant. Also, as a reminder, on next Monday, August 18th, the Selectmen will be meeting in joint session, uh, with the Planning Board to discuss items of joint interest, and just as a note, that's anticipated that meeting to start at 6:00 p.m. here in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, rather than, uh, 7:00 p.m. And we'll be finalizing the agenda with, uh, Selectman Chair Pat Flynn, over the next couple of days, and, uh, sharing a copy of that with the Board, and obviously posting it as well. As a further reminder, on Monday, August 25th, we've got a couple consecutive Mondays here, uh, the Board will be meeting in joint session with both the Finance Committee and the School Committee, in a mutual review and discussion on topic of finances. Finance Director Jennifer Petit will be presenting a PowerPoint, which will be a basic primer on municipal finance, and, uh, just for the Board's, uh, information, this will be confirmed in the agenda. You'll recall, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., uh, you'll be meeting in, uh, normal business session as Selectmen, that will be at the high school library. By the way, at 7:00 p.m. is when the joint meeting will begin with the School Committee and with the Finance Committee for that joint meeting on finances, so you'll have a 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., uh, business session, uh, on Monday, August 25th, that, as well, at that same location.
I might say that, when we did that once before, um, we didn't have our business meeting in the meeting where all three groups were meeting, we had a little side classroom...
Correct.
That we could use, okay.
Yeah, and if the Board would like to do that, we can. Obviously, we have to ensure that we have adequate opportunity for public, uh, to attend, and, uh, we'll get the word out on that as soon as that is confirmed, whether it's in a sidebar room...
It may not be possible.
Or, or in the main room.
Yeah, for, um...
But we'll work those details out.
Yeah, for communication purposes, it might not be, it might, might not be possible to do.
Yeah, I believe, Madam Chair, we, we had an executive session...
We did, that's right.
In the, in that smaller room, uh, which, uh, was obviously permitted to be in, in a closed session for that purpose.
I think, the only thing I would say is that we probably should, should plan our meeting to end 15 minutes before the session, because people will be coming in, you know, so we, we don't want to meet right up to the minute, uh, because, uh, they'll be coming in and chatting with each other. Well, anyway, we'll figure out those logistics.
We'll be happy to do our utmost to keep that business session compact.
Right.
If, if you do need a separate space for just the executive session, there is a conference room there, that would probably be the right size.
But this isn't, it's this open session, yeah, this is open session.
Yep.
But in the event that that would arise, that's helpful to know. And a final note, um, Madam Chair, I believe it's the final one, yes, uh, as a final August meeting reminder, uh, want all to be aware that we've scheduled an additional, uh, in this case, a second meeting for interested residents and landowners of the Little Pond area, uh, for a presentation and discussion on the upcoming wastewater project. Uh, again, you'll recall that we had a, one earlier in the year, uh, at, uh, the, uh, East Falmouth School. Uh, this will be at 7:00 p.m. in the Herman Room of the library on Thursday, August 21st. And that concludes my report, Madam Chair, and members of the Board, thank you.
Heather?
Just a couple of notes, um, in terms of the Golf RFP, it is up on the Golf Advisory Committee's page, uh, currently.
Excellent.
So if you go to the town's website, um, and look at the Golf Advisory Committee page, there'll be a link to that. Just a note, it does say on it, unofficial copy, um, not for bidding purposes, I believe. Uh, it is exactly the same as what will go out to bidders, but bidders need to seek that from, um, the Town Manager's Office. I just note that if anyone looks at it and thinks it's different, it is exactly the same, except for that note, uh, but we need to record all, um, prospective bidders in the office. The other is the, um, strategic plan you'll have tomorrow, if anybody would like a hard copy, you can let us know. Um, our goal is to have that reviewed and approved at your meeting on the 25th, so I'll be looking for your feedback between now and then, from individual Selectmen. And lastly, the Commodores play this evening in their second playoff game, I'm not sure what happened...
Wow.
But if they won, they move right on to the finals, which will be, uh, towards the end of this week. If they lost, they play another game tomorrow night.
Wow, good news. Okay, motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good, we are adjourned.